Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Albany City Council meeting Wednesday, March 22, 2023 at 6:00 PM. Please call the meeting to order and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much for joining us. We have a roll call, please, Gabe?
Yes, Your Honor. Mayor Alex Johnson II.
Here.
Councillors Newton.
Present.
Novak.
Here.
Montague.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
McGee.
Present.
And Smith.
Here.
All members present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Now we have a proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Month in Page three of your packet. Child Abuse Prevention Month, April 2023. Whereas each April, we renew our commitment to preventing child abuse and rededicate ourselves to working together to ensure all children can have a bright and hopeful future. And whereas victims of child abuse have an increased likelihood of health problems, poor education performance, substance abuse, early pregnancy, and criminal behavior, and whereas no socioeconomic group is immune to child abuse, and children of all races and ethnicities can be victims of child abuse. And whereas during 2021, there were 466 substantiated cases of child abuse and neglect in Lynn County, and 18 Oregon children died from causes related to familiar or caregiver abuse and/or neglect. Twelve of those children were less than five years old or younger, and eight were less than one year old. And whereas effective prevention programs succeed through partnerships of community groups that help parents provide a safe and nurturing environment. And whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is a problem that only can be addressed by involving our people throughout the community. I now therefore, I Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Albany, Oregon. And witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand that can cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 22nd day of March 2023, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Business from the Public. Thank you. Mr. Mike Quinn.
Michael F. Quinn, 4455 Sunset Ridge Drive, Northwest Albany, Oregon. Okay, I kind of came down here, and I'm trying not to take up a lot of time here, but a couple weeks ago, you guys voted to back the Benton County Jail. And for the bond measure and stuff. I like to say something, no disrespect, but Marilyn Smith, I read in on the council minutes that, and she's not a rep of North Albany, that she had the expertise on this. I'm going to try to potentially give you a little bit of a history lesson. And back in the 80s, I actually stood right about where Councilman Newton is. You're going to say, well, the city council wasn't here, but it was the Elks Club. I was a trustee then. And at the time, the Sheriff Burright, which was a deputy then, came into our office of the manager of the Elks Club and asked if he could come up and talk to the people about building a $20.4 million jail. We, back then, everybody wanted a jail on every corner and that. So we said yes. He came up. We had about 125 people. There's only two questions asked in the whole meeting. And the first one was, can you facilitate the jail, new jail, with the current budget that you have on top of the courthouse across the street? If you're aware, there used to be a jail on top of the courthouse across the street. And he said, yes. Well, we dismissed that because then for, at that time, you know, 30 some years ago, we've been paying, you know, for a levy every four years. The second question was really about, you know, cost overruns, and that was remedied too. What I'm trying to get at here is that, right now, this has been a big push. There's a group of us that are absolutely against this, because it really reaches into Lynn County here, too. One thing you haven't taken into consideration is the residents in Lynn County, their taxes will go up, and you'll go, well, how can that possibly be? Right now, they spend about between $1.5, $1.7 million to house Benton County inmates at Lynn County. And if that's taken away, we obviously know that the levy per thousand assessed will go up in that from where it's currently at. So, and the other thing is, is that they're trying to use intimate domain. There's a huge fight on that, so we're putting the cart before the horse. Like I say, nobody's talking over there yet. You go to a county commissioner meeting, and you know, they're just over there, you know, popping balloons and throwing confetti up going, oh, we'll make it. But they're not talking about facilitation money. There's nothing. We've got a couple jails up above that, in the Portland area, there's two of them. So hopefully, let me just keep going here, because I'll try to be quick. I'm the only guy on your list and stuff. So, everybody, we've talked about this, and we've been pushing for an inter-county facilitation type thing where do away with your jail over there, but move it over to here. And everybody goes, oh, we can't possibly do that. It's totally impossible. Prime example, Lynn-Benton Community College for 50 years. We've had a levy continuously on that. We have many other, Lynn-Benton Housing Authority, Lynn-Ben-Lincoln ESD. There's multiple counties east of the Cascades that facilitate one jail for a couple counties and stuff. So, the thing about it is, is that I think before we start telling everybody, you know, like in Albany, because really, this only, it somewhat affects the people in North Albany, but it really affects the people in that if we, you know, don't have that income from Benton County over here. And I'd like to see you guys potentially look at, why don't we interfacilitate something here? The ground's over there, there's plenty of room. They've talked about another wing over there and stuff, so why not do that? So, I, like I said, no disrespect to Marilyn Smith, but, you know, people in North Albany know that their taxes are going to go up, and the $250,000 per household assessed value, I will buy them all day long if you show me where there's a house for $250,000 out in North Albany and stuff, on the assessed value either, because there's only a 20% difference between that and market and stuff. So hopefully, you guys can maybe get on the bandwagon on that. The second thing is that I've got, is you're not having a printed agenda anymore, that you gotta do a QR code. I can remember when you were a councilman, that everybody complained about people out in the audience using their phones and stuff like that. They weren't really paying attention, and people wanted to have, you know, questions and stuff. I'd like to see a printed agenda when I walk in here. I mean, even if you print 10 of them, I don't think the city's going to go broke on that. I'll even pay for it if I had to.
I'll talk to the city manager about it.
Okay, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is Award of Contracts. A is Award of Contract ST-23-02 Asphalt Surface Treatment Program. Engineers Stacy Bel Castro and Andrew Monaco, pages four through seven of your packet. So is Andrew speaking to us tonight? Good to meet you.
Good evening, councillors and mayor. On March 1, 2023, five bids were open for Project ST-2302, 2023 Asphalt Surface Treatment Program. The low bidder was Pave Northwest Incorporated of Markola, Oregon. The scope of this project includes placement of sorry seals on local streets and neighborhoods in North Albany. Sorry seal is a thin pavement preservation surface treatment that seals small cracks and restores pavement surface, the most effective when applied to residential streets that are still in fairly good condition. Staff recommends council award a contract in the amount of $173,500 to Pave Northwest Incorporated of Markola, Oregon for construction of sorry seals for the asphalt surface treatment program.
Counsel, any questions? Counselor Novak, Newton, sorry.
I had a question about the usage of latex, and I just want, I just want to know about the breakdown process, you know, as our roads do break down. I already know we're concerned about microplastics. I just was curious about that process, if you could explain it a little more.
So, that it's an asphalt emulsion, so it's asphalt, water, and the latex is a small amount of latex added, I think to, asphalt is fairly brittle, especially the grade that's used in that kind of emulsion. So that latex modifier just helps soften that, the overall mix.
Yeah, with weather fluctuations and such. Okay.
Yeah, and it's not a large amount of, it's just a, it's a small amount of, it's called a polymer modified asphalt. Yeah.
Okay.
So does that increase life? So it increases surface life?
It just helps the, it just helps soften the asphalt binder that's in the emulsion. So, so, because pavements move, they're actually flexible.
Right.
So.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any counsel, any other questions? No? Okay, thank you. So, do we have a motion?
I move we award the contract in the amount of $1,000, $173,500 to the lowest bidder, Pave Northwest Inc. of Markola, Oregon, 87454.
Wait a second, a motion and a second. Thank you, Counselor Novak.
Second.
Counselor Novak, seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Next, item B, is Award of Contract for Upgrading Storage Area Network, Luke Cotton, page eight through 10 of your packet.
Luke Cotton, IT Project Manager for the City of Albany. And what's in front of you here with the memo talks about the approval about a year and a half ago, where we had ARPA funds earmarked for a storage area network.
Can you put the mic just a little closer?
Sure, I can do that. The storage area network's going to be set up to have a cost with the proposal from Bridge Data Solutions, Inc. We had three bidders. Bridge Data's solution was the match that we found out of all of the evaluations. The total impact is around $274,479.38 for the initial five years of the contract to get this new storage system in place.
Did everybody hear that?
Not really super well.
Can you cover that last part again, please?
Sure. So the storage area network is going to have the five-year initial term. The ARPA funds were approved about a year and a half ago for $300,000. This is going to be about $274,000, and that's the five-year contract for the service support warranty for storage systems that cover virtualization across the city.
Right, thank you. Counsel, any questions? Go ahead.
Is this cloud storage or solid state?
This is going to be a local storage system. It'll actually allow us to have a lot of disaster recovery options between the city hall and the library. It'll make storage replication between the two sites. So if one has an incident, we have the other available, and city operations, like our network drives and things like that, would stay available.
So we'll have it on-site here in city hall?
Correct. One unit would be on-site here in city hall, and another unit would be on-site in the library.
Excellent.
So redundant systems?
Yep.
Excellent. So we've heard explanation. Oh, go ahead, please.
I noticed on the budget impact, it indicates that you've got the paid from a department's budget, so it already is fully budgeted for the five years then, without having to add any more.
Correct. The ARPA funds are what's going to be covering this.
Counselor McGee, anybody else?
I have a motion.
You have a question? Yes, one more question.
Last question, sorry.
Go for it.
The $274,000, that's the first five years. What is the, what are we anticipating the cost would be after the, after those five years? Assuming we own the equipment and it's on-site here?
There's still the licensing fees around the software that kind of runs around it. I don't have the numbers right in front of me, what each initial year would be. There's some option for the vendor to increase by cost of living kind of stuff. Unfortunately, I don't have that right in front of me, what it would be after the five. The hardware itself, storage area networks, we usually kind of go through a cycle of five years, and then we move it into kind of second tier, where we look to get something new that, like, the older system is about the equivalent of a massive box, whereas this stuff is a couple of casserole trays in size, and so it just keeps on getting smaller and smaller.
Okay.
So I have a question, because of that question, is there a, is the warranty included in this $274,000?
Correct.
Okay, so it covers the whole term?
Yep. Quick part replacement, everything.
Okay, thank you. So I've heard, I heard what I needed to hear. Have a motion?
I'll move that we approve the, sorry, I'm now scrolling up to see what the name is, since I'm all the way down here, award the contract for upgrading our storage area network.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, say aye. Or say no? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next on the, next on the agenda is the consent calendar. Any council like to make any changes?
I would like to just make an addition to item 6B3. Read that without my readers. Yeah, 6B3, if I may.
Just a second, I'm trying to find it. Okay, 6B3?
Yeah, it was the meeting notes from March 8th, so.
So you would pull those from the minutes? Yeah, pull it off for now, and then we'll go back to it. So we're going to pull that off for now. Any other changes? I know that I found one, Nancy Wise, Commissioner Wise was Nancy Wise, not Carol, and I think Marilyn already took care of that. So thank you, Counselor Smith. So, so we're going to go ahead and prove the adoption, the consent calendar without option 6B3. All those in favor say aye.
We don't have a, we don't, motion.
We don't need a motion?
We do not have a motion for the consent.
I move we approve the consent agenda without the pulled item.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Counselor Novak?
So, yeah, if I may, and it has to do with when Commissioner Wise was here, and there's just no record in the minutes of the fact that I expressed strong financial concerns regarding the bond and how it would affect the people I represent in North Albany. It just wasn't mentioned, and I did raise some strong concerns.
You did.
So I would like that in the record, please. Thank you.
Thank you. So now would you, do we approve the change? So go to the next meeting. Is that correct?
If we don't have specific language that is agreed upon, then it's best to wait until the next.
It's always until the next meeting. Okay?
Okay, may I ask, because this has happened before, where I asked to put something in the minutes that wasn't there, and, and then nothing ever comes of it. So, is there any problem with any, if I had agreement with my fellow councillors, could we then add that to the?
Let me go to Deputy Clerk. Let's go to Deputy Clerk, see what he has to say.
So, since the minutes have not been approved, they can just wait, and they will be on the agenda next time since they're not approved. These look like they're the city clerk's, and she's the one who took them, and I'll pass this along, and she'll make those edits at the, in front of you again at your next meeting.
Okay, so it would have the language that I'm requesting?
Correct.
Okay, good.
Well, remember that these are what are called skinny minutes, so they're summaries.
I understand, but this is very important to me to have on the record that I expressed a concern, because it's a big concern.
It'll probably be something like, Counselor Novak expressed a concern.
Of the financial impact of the bond. Yeah, I just want that on the record. I would, because there's no mention, and skinny or not, to me, that's a big deal. That's, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Novak. Okay, next on the agenda is Approval of an Agreement, a Memorandum of Understanding with Bird Rides, Inc.
Mayor?
Yes.
That's a part of the consent.
Oh, it is, okay.
Over to the next page.
Our next page. Next is Business from the Council, item seven. So I started over there last time. I'll start with Counselor Montague this time. Did that catch you off guard?
Yeah, no, I'm good. I got it. Okay, so first thing, I was not a councillor at the time, but when the council approved the increase in Republic Services rate adjustment, Julie Jackson and, and city staff said that they were going to be implementing a low-income assistance program. Did that happen?
No, that, Chris Bailey has been working with Julie Jackson, but Julie's had some personal issues that have gotten in the way in the last couple of months.
Okay.
But they are working on that.
Do we have an estimated time of when that's going to happen?
Well, it's, it's going to be Republic Services that does that. And what Republic was looking for was help from our Public Works Department on how to implement a low-income assistance program.
Okay.
So, and remember also that we work with the Community Services Consortium, who actually administer that for us. So there's more than just the two of us, the city and Republic.
Yeah, I understand. I just, I know it's been since November, and there are people that probably can use that help. So I'm looking for some solution on that. Also, I was looking at the Enhanced Enforcement Downtown Zone, and I think there's supposed to be a report that comes out about that, and I haven't been able to find it. So I'm wondering if I can get some assistance on getting that report.
We would normally have some in, probably the chief would come in and give a report on how that's working, and the judge, but I can give you, I can probably give you the update of what they would tell you, if you would, if you would like now, which is.
Are we supposed to have like a formal reporting? Isn't that?
They can give you a formal reporting, if you, if you want one, but they're not, they're not using it. And so they're.
They're not using enforcement though?
They're not using the enhancement zone. They're not citing people under that ordinance right now. So there'll be zero people that have been cited under it, that have gone to court, that have been prosecuted, so.
Okay.
But they can, and I don't know if Judge Reed touched on that at all in his, in his, okay.
He didn't, not somebody who was here, he did not.
I don't remember what I'm saying.
But as of now, there, Albany Police Department's not citing under that, under that ordinance.
Okay.
So the report would be very simple.
Yeah.
At the time that the staff, at the time that the council put this together and approved it, the thought was that there would be enforcement actions throughout the year, and the council wanted a report on it.
Yeah.
The report right now would be zero.
Zero, okay. All right, thank you.
Counselor, next councillor, Counselor Kupczynski?
Yes, I'm just going to, since Gina isn't here, just a question for the city manager. Can you bring us possibly up to date on what's happening with status of Airbnb revenues coming in? Where are they going, et cetera? And will they be part of a formal report that we would get as to how much we're getting and where they're going?
Sure. So Airbnbs and BnBs, as you know, are subject to transient lodging taxes, just like hotels are. Up until a couple of years ago, Albany had a part of its code that said that lodging facilities that had six bedrooms or less were exempt from transient lodging taxes. So the first step was to remove that part of the code, which was done. Then follow-on steps would include either implementing a program at the city level, or the option was to use the state's ability to collect transient lodging taxes on the city's behalf. However, if you, if you use the state to collect transient lodging tax on the city's behalf, you have to, you go in, as it were, whole hog. They collect all transient lodging taxes from hotels as well as Airbnbs. The state has a somewhat of a short record, certainly, which is maybe why it's a spotty record so far. It's not something that we feel yet that we can put all of our eggs in that basket. So at some point in the near future, we're going to have to decide whether we, we do indeed ask the state or make arrangements with the state to collect on our behalf, or if we do that on our own as a city. It is, we recognize, the staff recognizes that it's not really, you know, it's not really fair to the hotel industry to give an advantage to the bed and breakfast accommodations. They should be paying that transient lodging tax as well.
So at this point in time, we're not collecting any taxes or revenue from Airbnbs of any kind?
Well, and maybe Sean can comment on this, but Airbnb as a company has very much stiff-armed. Any suggestion that they need to pay transient lodging taxes? Now, they're, they're only one.
VRBOs.
VRBO purveyor. There are others that I have heard are actually, may be collecting tax, but we as a city are not collecting it right now.
And we don't, we don't have the capacity to collect?
No, we don't. I mean, it's going to take some legislative changes from us here in the city, and then it's going to take some staff to, to work up the, in the finance department to work up the capability to do that.
Okay, are other, say, surrounding cities from us, are they actually able to implement it somehow, somehow? I think we may be missing revenue.
We are missing some revenue. That's correct. And I think Corvallis does collect it, but I would have to defer to Gina.
So I understand that Corvallis actually has the state do theirs. That's what I was told by Charles, Mayor Mann, and the previous mayor. The concern I have is that they'll take 5%, you know, they want administrative costs, so it further reduces our taxes. I hope that at some point, we can have them, them submit their tax, you know, payments themselves when they, when they charge someone. So it's just a matter of figuring that piece out. So, going a little bit further, yeah, there are other, other cities that, that do collect on, on the tax. We have a hard time in Albany, we're going to have a hard time in Albany doing this. One reason is because we're basically on the honor system. So we don't know who runs VRDs. It's a vacation rental. You can run a vacation rental and put it on Craigslist and rent it out by the night if you want. And we don't have a way of report, of knowing who, yeah, we don't have a way of knowing who's doing that, because we don't have business licenses in Oregon or in Albany. And so for an example, if you take one of the beach communities, like Lincoln City, Lincoln City has a fee every year, and I believe it's $200 a year to operate a vacation rental. And then the city knows who's operating, and they have a license that they have, and then they're able to get the taxes that way and collect them that way. But again, right now, we really don't have a way of knowing who is, who's running a vacation rental. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's options there. I mean, we can, we can look into, so.
Can you also find out an estimate of what we're not collecting? Can you also find out an estimate of what we're not collecting?
Well, that's, that's the, it would be a guesstimate for sure, because we don't know how many vaca, we don't know how many people are actually renting their houses out to, you know.
It's not just houses, apartment complexes have Airbnbs too.
Right. Make that, yeah.
And it's not just homes.
Yeah, okay. So, go ahead.
I feel like that was mentioned by Seth, like in August, September, October, sometime last year. I thought it was like.
Wasn't much.
I, I think it was like $50,000 or $60,000. And so like if we were collecting it, so we'd have over an extra $200,000 we're collecting it since 2019, which is when I believe it was supposed to take effect. But just, I don't, like, I'm going to go and look at the minutes, but I'm just thinking.
It's, I mean, there could be a substantial amount there. It wouldn't be as much as some of the, like a Lincoln City or something, where like probably half of the houses on the west side of 101 are vacation rentals. But it could be a substantial amount if we could.
Well, it's not just the amount of money either. It's the question of fairness competing with hotels. So VRBOs should pay the PLT tax.
Okay, thank you. You're done, Counselor Kopczynski? Let's go back over to Counselor Montague, let's go to Counselor Newton. Counselor Newton.
Okay, I have a few things. So one, I, with all the sunshine, it made me realize we have three and a half weeks till the first farmer's market, so just wanted to plug that. I hope to see you all there. I'm really excited.
You will.
And then something else, I was at the main library with my kids this, this past weekend, and had an awesome time, and I got to learn more about the Maker Studio. I think that's a really great ad that we're doing at the library. And I believe they have their first event with a hands-on program with the Makerspace materials. It's free, and it's in the library, and 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. this Thursday. And then the other thing, this is totally way, way myopic. I finally have new neighbors right next door, and I got to meet them, and I asked them, "Hey, why'd you move to Albany?" And they told me, they were looking at home, they came from out of state. They're looking at homes first in Portland, and said it didn't feel as safe as where they wanted to be. They looked at McMinnville, looked at other communities, looked in Salem. They ended up being under contract to the house in Dallas and decided to pull out. Didn't feel right for them. And they stumbled upon Albany. And they loved the carousel and the restaurants, and they just, it just felt immediately like home. And so I'm thrilled to have my new neighbors. I'm excited. So just had to mention that. And also just goes to show that, you know, Albany, we're on the map, and people are seeing just what an awesome town we are. And then another thing is I am, you know, always looking for more materials to read and make sure that I, I feel up to date. And I just wanted to make a request for staff that whenever we bring up any topics, if anything's been shared with old council, just send it all on over. I want to, I want to read it all and make sure that I have all the context I need and making the best decisions possible. But that's it.
Thank you. Counselor Novak?
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Counselor Smith, and I'll come to you over there.
I have, have one thing this evening. This is a response to the comment about the effect on Lynn County taxes by the potential new justice center in Benton County. I asked the question of Commissioner Wise, and I had asked it previously earlier in the month of the staff at Benton County during the Wallamette Criminal Justice Council monthly meeting, ask them about housing prisoners at the Lynn County Jail because they contract for space in other county jails around the state and have done so for years. The answer from the Benton County Sheriff and from the county commissioner was that they would like to house more prisoners in the Lynn County Jail, but they very seldom meet the criteria that Lynn County sets for housing prisoners that are not Lynn County, in Lynn County custody. So Lynn County is not receiving more than $1 million a year for, from Benton County for housing prisoners in the Benton, in the Lynn County Jail. Just wanted to, wanted that on the record.
Thank you. Counselor Novak, no, Mr. Counsel McGee.
Thank you. I want to bring back to your attention some concerns from some of my constituents regarding choice with, with how we heat our homes and cook our food. And I have had written conversations with our city manager along the lines of people in Albany have the right to use natural gas or whatever they want when they create a home. My constituent is really concerned that we get that in the code in writing. And then our city manager told me that we could put it in writing in the code, but if the state says otherwise, that supersedes what we have in our code. And I want to bring to your attention, all of you, in case you're not aware, there are cities around our state that are suing Salem, suing our government for the right, that they, that Salem, Salem gives us so many dictates and mandates. And I would hope that you all would join me in standing up to Salem if it ever comes down to it, because I believe the people who live in our town, the people who are attracted to Albany for various reasons, and I'm really happy to hear your story about your neighbors, I think they should have that choice, how they want to build their home, if they want natural gas. And then I had Peter forward to you all a tweet that was sent to me by the same constituent where apparently our governor had $350,000 worth of natural gas, whatever, put into her mansion. So it's good for her, but not for us? I don't think that's right. I think we need to, if we don't enshrine it in our code, and if our code doesn't mean anything when Salem says otherwise, I, if I'm the only one, I would stand up against that because I think we deserve the right to make our decisions and not have someone over our heads telling us, "No, you can't," especially in light of the hypocrisy of doing what they want to do for themselves and saying, "No, that's for me, but not for you." So I just, I really feel strongly about this, and I stand with all of my constituents who want us to support them in their concerns. And I, I'm 100% for this. I think we should, we should have that right, and no one should have the right to take it away from us.
That's it?
Thank you. That's it.
Okay. Counselor McGee?
Three things. One is about the feral cats again. This constituent asks that we look at some options and maybe adopt some policies that Safe Haven has with Salem Fields and the Heartland Humane Society, and how Heartland Humane works with OSU veterinarian student clinics to rotate the animals out and to neuter them and spay them. And so she just wants us to look into that and possibly adopt some of those sort of policies for the feral cats in the neighborhood. That's one. Two, I had an opportunity to speak at the men's breakfast at Montiff Park. Oh, not Montiff.
Men and Night Village.
Men and Night Village, sorry, I was just at Montiff, my bad. But it was really good. They were excited about the work we're doing, and they were excited about the lights, but it cautioned us about the nightlife and the night creatures. So we have to be careful about our LED lights and where they are, and just being very sensitive to our pets or the nightlife that's in the community. So they expressed that. And then lastly, just to piggyback off of Counselor Newton's point about people moving to Albany, just had a sorority sister move here from DC. She works for the FBI. Her husband is doing his residency at Cravallis. And they were going to move to Cravallis, and I was like, "No, I'm not Albany." I was trying to get her to move by me in Drapersville, by Knoxville, but she moved to North Albany, so. Her name, her name's Mia. She's here, and she'll be here for, they bought a house there. So she'll be here for at least the next five years while he's finishing up his residency, so. Yeah, and she loves the carousel, she loves the pigs. I've been showing her around, and she has community, and she works in Salem for the FBI, and then she comes here, or she works from home too. And so she's learning the community, and she really, really likes it, so.
That's good news.
Yeah.
Go ahead and finish.
I remembered one more thing. Sorry. Oh, no, go ahead.
I'm so sorry. There were three things. The last thing is that the person I pointed to, the Landmarks Commission, has resigned.
Okay.
He stepped away, so we have to get someone else, so.
So I think Kenzie would be a great resource for that.
Yep, I will, I'll let her know. I just want to, I just got his email.
Oh, did?
Because it just happened like last week.
Oh, wow, okay.
I think that's it. I had one last thing, I apologize. I know that a few people might have heard and read that there were some layoffs at LBCC. And I noticed that they had a large cut to their ABS program, the Adult Basic Skills Program. And I was curious about, you know, how that would impact, you know. I know, and we do a lot, a lot with them, and they help work with folks in our community that are underserved and underrepresented, underrepresented. And, you know, I believe I read that they were cutting a lot of the evening classes for ESL. And so I was just curious how that was going to, you know, impact our community as a whole, and then, yeah.
Just so happens, we have somebody that works at LBCC.
She's an English professor.
I AM, and I don't work in ABS, and it is a very sad situation. And actually, we're going to go through another round of cuts next year too, so this is not even it.
So it's going to be further?
And it was, and it wasn't just ABS. It was our entire library, it was our entire computer science program, it's our entire criminal justice program in an effort to balance our budget. So we are not doing so well, and I'm in the faculty association. We are just not happy, but it's just a lot of sadness, folks losing their jobs. And, and I don't know, we are thinking of, and being innovative of how to serve, best serve our ESL and ELL student population and underserved as we are pursuing to be a Hispanic, Hispanic-serving institution, and it's going to take a lot to do that, so.
Okay. Thanks for sharing that.
Yeah.
Are you done, counselors? I too have a story about someone I met that chose us over Portland. She was, it was awesome. It was really nice that we sat down and talked, and I'm in, I work with seniors, you know that. And so I saw this new name pop up on my network, and I'm like, "I got to meet this person." And so her predecessor had this business card in my rack. I call it my Me Google Map Rack. And so we had lunch, and she goes, "I chose Albany on purpose. I could afford to live here. My son loves his school, he loves the carousel." So of course I gave her some tokens. But it was really nice to have her explain to me why she moved here and how she's telling her friends to come to Albany as well, so. And she came from Portland down to here. I had the pleasure of attending the Corvallis. I think I brought this up earlier, but the Corvallis celebrate, Celebrate Corvallis. That was a lot of fun. And their Chamber of Commerce president actually lived in Albany. So it was really nice to meet him and his wife, meet him and his wife. And then other than that, it's just been busy. The weather's been playing tricks on us. Left the house without a jacket this morning, we ended up getting wet. But other than that, it's been a good week for all of us, and I will turn it over to our city manager.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I wanted it further to what Counselor Smith had said earlier about the comments about a jail. I wanted to point out that the bond, as it's proposed, covers much more than just a jail. It's not only a correctional facility with additional facilities for mental health treatment and for addiction treatment, it's also a sheriff's office, an emergency operations center, an expanded youth mental health facilities, and also homelessness navigation center.
And also DA's office, right?
Pardon?
I think the DA's office is included in that, correct?
That I don't, that I, but it could be, could very well be that they're near the sheriff's office. And the only other thing I had, Mr. Mayor, is that I will be out of the office next week at the Northwest Managers Conference from Tuesday through Friday of next week.
Oh. I have one more thing. There's a horse show starting tomorrow, today, horse, at the Fairgrounds through this Saturday. So if you want to go see some beautiful horses, that's where you want to go. And also, the Visitor Association has a huge list of events going on in the city of Albany, and so Rebecca Bonne will be able to bring you up to speed on that. Thank you. So the next, thing off. So the next meeting is Monday, April 10th, at 2023 at 4:00 p.m. for our work session. And then Wednesday, April 12th, at 2023 at 6:00 p.m. for a city council meeting. And with that, I will thank you all for being here tonight, and I'll adjourn the meeting.